We're going to go ahead and get this thing started and put on our checklist. The clock's here and City Hall needs to be changed to reflect the end of daylight savings from Friday, Saturday night. So with that, I'm going to call to order the November 2nd, 2020 Board of Aldermen meeting. When everyone please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderwoman Evelyn. Where'd she go? I thought she was here.
Here. Did you hear me?
I hear you. I can hear you now.
Okay.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Here.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderwoman Parker Tyce.
Here.
Alderman Weggie.
Here.
All members of the year are present.
Wonderful. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, we have no announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognition, nor do we have a public hearing, so we'll move down to item five, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or modifications to be made to the agenda with the understanding that if somebody wants something pulled off the consent agenda, we can wait until that item is taken up, till the consent agenda is taken up. Any objection to approving the agenda as submitted? Saying none, it will be approved by acclamation. Next up, our citizen comments, item six. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes for your comments. And I'm going to rely upon Kelly to let us know if anybody raises their hand to.
No one has their hand raised at this moment.
Okay. If you stay with us during the meeting, there will be another opportunity, I believe. There usually is, yep, for citizens' comment after everything. So next on the agenda are the mayor and aldermen report. I do have one. Bear with me a second here. We have, let's see, first is, I'm not sure if anybody's aware of this, but tomorrow is Election Day. For those who've been living off the grid for the last three months. On the ballot is Proposition 1. You might have seen some signs up in the neighborhood. I know some people have asked why is a use tax proposed by the city on the November ballot? And the answer is simple. Over time, more and more purchases of goods, supplies, and materials are shifting to out-of-state and online purchases rather than from our local retailers. Unlike many cities in St. Louis County, Brentwood has been able to provide municipal services without relying on property taxes. The use tax will provide revenue for city services without increasing local sales or property tax rate. You will never pay both a sales tax and use tax. And Proposition 1 does not increase local sales or property taxes. Also, according to the St. Louis County Board of Elections website, you can vote at any polling location like you could at the August primary. This should help with long lines. As you might know, we have two voting locations within Brentwood jurisdiction. One is at a Brentwood Recreation Center and the other is at the school district headquarters. The polling places do open at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning and close at 7:00. Next on the mayor's report is what to do with all these election recycle signs.
Permission to talk.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, apologies.
Okay. You know, don't trash them, recycle them is our suggestion. As Uncle Sam said, we want you to recycle your yard signs. Sturdy corrugated plastic yard signs and metal stands cannot be recycled curbside, but these can be collected for recycling at the Brentwood Public Works Building. Just drop off your corrugated plastic yard signs and metal stands outside the Brentwood Public Works Building, which is located at 8330 Manchester Road anytime from November 6th through November 16th. If the yard sign is made of paper or cardboard, the paper or cardboard can be recycled curbside if it is not laminated. If the yard sign is a very thin flexible plastic, like a plastic bag, this cannot be recycled curbside, but it can be recycled where you take plastic bags or plastic film for recycling. Another thing I wanted to mention is, last week we had a question on social media concerning the property located, or concerning the city's acquisition of property located at 8722 Suburban Tracks in connection with the Brentwood Bound Plan. In response to those questions, I directed staff to draft a post that set out the facts and addressed the questions and concerns. For those of you who haven't seen that, you can find that information on the city's webpage. Just in general, I also want to take this opportunity just to remind folks, you know, there are times that you will have questions and concerns about what the city is doing, about city programs, anything city-related. My suggestion to you, and I made this at the coffee with the mayor last Thursday, is please get answers to those questions, not from social media, but get them from your alderperson, get them from the city website. You know, each resident in Brentwood is fortunate enough to have two alderpersons. And we are fortunate to have, I know all eight of them very well, and I can tell you that all eight of them are wonderful souls who are dedicated to representing the residents and helping out the residents. They take no offense to you calling them, they take no offense to you emailing them, and they will get back to you. It may not be in five minutes, it might take as much as a day, but they will return your, either your phone call or your email. And in my opinion, that's the best place to go to get information about what's going on in the city. Update on the Sustainability Committee that the board approved a couple of meetings back. We've been fortunate that we have a lot of residents who have expressed a tremendous desire to serve on that committee. And I will be making my appointment to the Board of Aldermen for that committee at the next Board of Aldermen meeting two weeks from tonight. We also have upcoming this Saturday, a residential paper shredding event. That's Saturday, November 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Brentwood Recreation Complex. You'll be able to dispose of residential personal and confidential paperwork, which will be shredded by Secure Document Destruction. Questions about what to shred, you can call them directly at 314-795-0004. Maximum of five boxes of documents per household. So if you have a lot of documents, I would suggest you going with very, very, very large boxes to stay under that five-box limit. I'm kidding about that last part. I don't know what size boxes they will accept, but I'm sure reasonable-sized boxes will be fine. If you have larger quantity of items to be shredded, or if you are a business, you can contact Secure Document Destruction directly as well. This event will follow physical distancing restrictions. So please, you'll just remain in your vehicle to limit contact with the Secure Document Destruction crew. They will remove the documents for you. Code Red. We've recently upgraded Brentwood's Code Red Community Notification System to include weather warnings in order to provide residents and businesses with automated severe weather alerts. Those who choose to opt into this service will receive flash flood, tornado, and severe thunderstorm warnings just moments after an alert has been issued by the National Weather Service. If you want to subscribe to the service, more information can be found again on the city's webpage. You know, the Code Red, the paper shredding, I've already talked about, the electronic recycling event that we have frequently. We just had one a few weeks ago. The trash, recycling, and yard waste pickup are all services provided to the resident at no charge. This is just another benefit to making Brentwood your home. So that's it with the mayor's report. Next up, we have Alderwoman Evelyn. Do you have any report?
No, I have no report.
Okay. Alderman Gould.
Just one, I want to thank Brandon Eckert from Naked Spirits, allowing us to host our Ward Three meeting there. And it was very successful, and we look forward to having many more other businesses around Brentwood.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmiller.
No report.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Just a thank you to the Public Works for the version of trash that would burst. And a major effort has gone smoothly, but the trucks have been around and the people have been working very, very hard to make it. And we appreciate their effort.
Thank you. Alderman Plufka.
No report.
Alderwoman Sims.
Thank you. It's that most wonderful time of the year, budget season. Ways and Means is currently going through the proposed 2021 budget. We have a committee meeting this Thursday at 5:30 via Zoom, wherein we will be taking up the proposed budgets for Public Works and Parks and IT if we get to it. So please come one, come all. I sent this in an email to the Alderman earlier today. If you would like to submit questions electronically, we will try to get those processed and turned around in advance of the meeting. In addition, Alderman, if you care to attend the committee meeting, I will certainly recognize you to ask questions once the committee gets through it. So bring out your pencils and your thinking caps. It's going to be fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman Tyce.
Next Tuesday, the, I think I have it pulled up. We're going to have our Ward One meeting. It will be electronically. That's Tuesday, the 10th. So look on social media for an electronic invitation to the ward meeting. And I'd also like to thank the police for being out and about on Halloween. Saw them circling, they were stopping and talking to people. It was great having that connection with residents. So appreciate them.
Thank you. And Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, let's see. Next, Public Works is November 12th. We are moving at, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. to accommodate Ways and Means continuing to churn through the budget. And one thing, just a heads up, we're going to do something a little different in Public Works. We're going to have a 15-minute open committee time to just think strategically about what the impact will be on Public Works when Brentwood Bound is done, and what big strategic things do we need to think about and to get ready for Brentwood Bound when it is online in three years. So that's it. Public Works.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is City Administrator Report. We have one item, and that is the Brentwood Bound update.
All right. Good evening. Craig Schler with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll do a quick update, my normal update, then I've got a presentation to talk about two items on the consent agenda to update you all and take any questions. So starting with the typical Brentwood Bound update for November 2nd. The warrant list was updated today, I believe, and so that update was not part of this Brentwood Bound update. That was part of your board packet, but property acquisitions, total expenses, the last Board of Aldermen meeting is $189,260.50. And that was for property reestablishment expenses and a property acquisition. And that was the only category that was affected. Going down below to the funding sources, the item in yellow is new since the last meeting. So the board approved the Great Rivers Habitat Alliance Grant for $20,000. So the funding source has been updated to reflect that. So if you, I'll take any questions for this before I go to the presentation.
Any questions for Craig? Just raise your hand. If not, we will move on, Craig.
Okay. Let me share my screen.
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Alderwoman Tyce.
Could everyone mute their computers? Because we're getting some feedback.
Yeah, that's a great idea. If everybody could do that. I think Alderwoman Sims discovered and shared with us this wonderful feature that if you keep it on mute, but you hold your spacebar while you're talking, it temporarily unmutes your computer. So the default is to keep it muted. And once again, thank you, Alderwoman Sims.
Okay. So can everyone see the presentation? I'll just take your nod. Okay, great. So I've got some exciting news for you all to share, but before I jump into that, I wanted to just go back and give an update on why we are where we are today, because I know there's at least one alderman on the board. So going back in time, you know, the master plan always showed some projects that were not funded. The city did a survey last fall just to double-check with the citizens and make sure that those unfunded projects were actually desired. We got positive feedback from the citizens, but we ultimately wanted to know what the board wanted to do. So we held a work session in December, and we went through a bunch of topics, but really the result of that presentation was ultimately to get consensus from you all, whether you wanted us to go out and get funding for some of these unfunded projects or not. So at the end of that work session, the mayor did a really informal straw vote. We got the green light per se from you all, so we brought forth Resolution 1191 last January, which ultimately directed staff and consultants to go look for funding for some of these unfunded projects and bring them back to you all. So we've been working long and hard, staff and consultants. We've told you about some partnerships that we've received to date, a bunch of other ones that we're working on along with grants. And I just wanted to remind you again, I've told you this before, but these grants and partnerships cost a significant amount of time and money from staff and consultants, and we've been so successful in this project. This is not common by any means, because there's a need here. And we can talk to groups about how there's a need because some of these projects aren't funded. And we've gotten positive feedback from that, which has allowed us to be successful because people want to support certain parts of the project, maybe because it aligns with that group's mission or it scores better in that grant based on the scoring that that grant puts forward. But it's really important that we have that, and we've done really well at, you know, turning it into a success. And now we're getting to the point where we're at the implementation phase. So just to remind you, some of the unfunded projects, we already have the Phase One Trails that are in the project. The board approved the design earlier this year, and the construction costs are approved with Alkali's contract this summer. So it leaves us Phase Two Trails. We originally thought this would be a more expensive project because design hadn't started. And we thought we may need some boardwalks or bridges to go over some of these ponds. But now, partly because MSD now has access roads going through that area, the Phase True, Phase Two Trails has become so simple. We literally just have to connect a few dots of trails. In that project now, the construction cost is $100,000. So it's been streamlined a lot. The dog park, working with Eric, we're going to reuse as much materials from the current dog park as possible. Some of you guys want this project to happen. The Event Lawn Comfort Station building, the construction costs that were presented to you all over a year ago was 2.8 million. That's just the construction cost. So with contingency and design costs, what was presented at the last fall presentation with the citizen survey was over 3 million. The playground, including the water play area, is 2.25 million. So now the grand total of all the remaining unfunded projects is 4.8 million, which is significantly less than what we've talked about before. And a lot of that's due to just the design advancing, learning more and saying, oh, we just don't have to do that. So we're just in a great place right now. So the first piece of exciting news I want to tell you about is the Federal Clean Water Section 319 Grant. The city was recently awarded this grant from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to improve the water quality benefits to Brentwood Bound. The award amount is $300,000, but it will require approximately $200,000 of additional construction improvements and design. The grant requires additional wetland plants, excavation, and grading to the proposed pond in the flood mitigation Phase Two area. This is the pond that's where the current Midwest flooring building is. And this is really great because not only is it funding for an approved feature of Brentwood Bound, but it also aligns with the city's environmental sustainability goals that you guys have been putting a lot of time towards. Because essentially what it will do is that that pond will collect the water through natural cleansing and purifying. It'll clean that water before it goes into the stormwater system that's further downstream. Another grant that I mentioned before that you all approved at the last board meeting is a $20,000 grant from the Great Rivers Habitat Alliance. This is for a small wetland area that is in the rough location of that orange box in the Phase One area. This requires wetland plants, excavation, and grading to also be done. And just like the other grants and the other improvements, it aligns with the city's environmental and sustainability goals. So another great enhancement to the project, just helping clean the water before it leaves our site. So tonight is, one of the consent agenda items is a Jacobs proposal. And we're asking for approval for that because Jacobs has to complete the Phase Two design to submit to MSD by end of December, which is about eight weeks out. And these improvements require additional design for them to actually do this work. So that's why we're asking for you all to approve this task order. As part of this task order, there is the 319 grant that I talked about, the wetland improvements. There's the wetland for the Great Rivers Habitat Alliance, and also there's the final trail connections for those fail, for the Phase Two Trails. So it's about 500 linear feet of trails. So the majority of these trails that you see in this image are actually in the project because of the MSD access roads to get to that big tunnel that MSD is currently working on. So this is about 500 linear feet of trails that go underneath there. Next is the Muni Grant. So this is a grant that Eric, with the Parks Director with Brentwood, has been focusing on for a while. He brought a resolution to you all on July 20th, Resolution 1225, that, you know, just wanted to make sure you guys all approved the city going after this grant. And that was for the construction cost of a pavilion, comfort station, and event lawn at Norm West Park. This is important because this grant is specifically for that purpose. That money cannot be used for anything else. That's exactly how the grant was written, and that's why it was approved. We just found out last Monday, Monday, that the city received this grant. The award amount is $370,000, which is really exciting. The challenge with this grant is it requires the comfort station and event lawn to be constructed within 18 months. And this is extremely aggressive because design hasn't started. And it will take at least six months to design the project and in 12 months to construct it. It is due to this that we're requesting board action tonight for Christner's contract, who is an on-call landscape architect. Their contract is also part of the consent agenda. So just to remind you all, because I know we haven't talked about this project in a while. You know, back in, at the June work session, you know, just the construction costs, construction costs were 2.8 million. Looking at the actual project and the program, Eric and I, you know, worked and decided that, you know, certain components were not needed to really bring the cost down. So the current budget for the construction cost is 2 million. The design costs, that's part of this Christner on-call contract, is $146,470. So the total program budget is 2.15 million. This includes the 6,000-square-foot building, that's what was originally shown in the concept drawings, and site work. Site work is the additional sidewalks. So if you look at that top image, that's the image that's what currently funded. You know, if none of these unfunded projects are actually funded, you know, this came right out of the running, and this is what Norm West Park will look like by the parking lot. That comfort station, event lawn, requires additional sidewalks and paving for connection and event lawn. So with the cost of that actual building comes sidewalks, grading, landscaping, irrigation. It's really costly to get electrical and all the other utilities out there, water, gas, storm, sewer. And so if the board approves a contract tonight, ultimately what will happen is we'll have an architect on, that will actually start designing this project. And this will allow the team to actually come up with a program for what's in that building. I'm going to tell you on the next slide what was originally talked about, but over the next six months, the teams will work on and make sure that with your all's feedback that what's actually going in this building is what is desired by the staff and the city. Right now, you know, a recent comp, Navigate was a construction manager on O'Fallon's O'Day Park. They had a bigger event lawn building. This was completed in 2018, about two years ago. And just to kind of give you a perspective on, you know, that's a big park too, just like what you guys are doing with Brentwood Bound. But their building was 9,500 square feet, and the total cost of that building was 2.8 million. And that was just the building alone. That didn't include any site work, because all the other site work was in the overall park, and the overall park was close to 9 or 10 million dollars. So just to let you know, like, we're just, we don't have a design done, but ultimately we're utilizing our experience and also experience of the staff to come up with what we think the city's going to want, to come up with an actual estimate. But that doesn't mean that that's where it's going to end up at the end of the day, because we're going to hire the architect, and maybe the building comes up to be 5,000 square feet, because we just don't need certain program. But it's hard to really do that without an architect on board, because that's what architects are contracted to do, is ultimately come up with a building that works for the city based on the feedback given from everyone. So this was what the original concept that was presented to you all through a couple of presentations. I think the most recent one was back at the Fall Survey. But the original concept showed bathrooms, because, you know, Norm West Park is going to have a soccer field and all sorts of amenities to be a regional trail system. So having nice bathrooms would be really important, because as part of the master plan, the current bathrooms go away. It has an area for park maintenance equipment to be kept, the ability for a catered event to be held, indoor and outdoor areas, and entertainment area if guys wanted to have events. This was a concept that was shown, like I said, this is just a concept. This is not meaning it's going to turn out to be like this. Christner is going to spend six months designing this, reporting to your various boards to get feedback and working with staff to ultimately come up with that final design. So where are we at today? So we're asking for the board to consider approving Christner's contract. Like I said, the reason why this is urgent is because this grant asks for the building to be completely done, have everything done within 18 months, which is extremely aggressive. You all are not approving the size of the building or all these different features, because over the next six months, Christner's going to work with staff to program the building. And then in their contract, they have to present to the board at various milestones to get feedback from you all, so you guys can have a part of that. And then as the design goes on, when it comes up to 30% design, when it goes to 60% design, Navigate's going to update the estimate like we always do. And like I said, we're, so far we've got a great track record of delivering projects under budget. So I don't expect to break that reputation on this project either. Finally, I just want to close on funding recap. So the normal Board of Aldermen report I do at the bottom, it talks about access funding. So currently, the access funding, not including contingency, is 7.476 million. We just got the Muni Grant, the 319 Grant, that's another $670,000. The GRG Cost Share Agreement, we actually received that earlier this week. Bo and I are working on legal review and cost reimbursement, just to make sure we're really clear on that with GRG. But we actually have that agreement. We're just working on some finer, fine-line details and making sure that Kevin O'Keefe doesn't have any issues with it. But that will be ready for the next board meeting on November 16th. So we actually had that in hand, and that's $3 million. So that gives us a grand total of additional funds of 11.1 million. Again, that does not include contingency. If you look at my report, you currently have close to 7 million in contingency. The remaining unfunded projects are 4.8 million, so we're not asking for you to approve all that tonight. But I'm just saying, if you were, that still leaves you 6.3 million plus the 7 million in contingency. So the project is financially strong. You guys are in good shape. I would ask for you all to consider this Christner contract. It's 146,000. And also the Jacobs proposal for adding some of those features in to abide by or, which is to abide by the grant that was approved at the last meeting and this upcoming 319 grant as well. So that's a quick recap, and I can take any questions if anyone has any.
I have questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
I know others do too. One of the concerns I have, and not just with Brentwood Bound, is that we tend to ask for an architect's view, and one thing comes back and it's taken or leave it. It was like the thing which is been left. I really would like to see several different sketches of something and have the board discuss them and pick one, rather than just have one presented. And the size of this is, my condo would fit in this four. It's enormous. And I understand having room for maintenance, that's really important. But we need all these other features, and that's true of some of the other things that are on the list. I would love to see a workshop with just our board to talk about Phase Two. If, Mr. Mayor, we could consider that at some times, what we really want, we're going, what options might be. Noise versus non-noise. I think there are a lot of things here we haven't had a chance to check out with Phase Two. So I have reservations about this because of past experience with having something off. And then bingo, it's in front of us and it's a do-or-die thing. Bingo. It's in front of us and it's a do or die thing.
Okay, um, I, I, I'm anticipating that someone's going to make a request to remove, uh, resolution twelve fifty-seven. From the consent agenda and I'm seeing a couple of nods. So what I'd rather do is wait until. We take that up under new business to have more of a discussion about this. So we don't have. Um, so we don't do this two times. So with that, um, if you've got any other questions for Craig about Brentwood Bound, go ahead and ask him now. The only thing I ask is if it's relating solely to this, um, event lawn building. If you could just wait until we take up, uh, twelve fifty-seven under new business, that would be, that would be great. Okay. Alderman Weg, I think you had your hand.
Yeah, Craig, can you, can you give some clarification on the MSD right away, uh, in the Rogers Parkway, uh, playground that's going out? I, I don't understand what that's about.
The MSD right away?
Uh, the forty thousand. That was in the bullets.
Where? On, um, oh, that's nothing to do with what I'm talking about. Um, sorry, that threw me off. I, I wasn't part of that. Uh, so. And Eric may have to chime in and help me out with that, because I know he's primarily been working on that, but, um. My understanding that MSD's got an alignment of, you know, they have pipes all over the place that have. Frankly, a lot of them have nothing to do with Brentwood Bound. It has to do with their, um, separation of storm and sewer. And that's like, if you look at this image, there's like, they're building these tunnels hundreds of feet all over underneath Brentwood. So they have a, a pipe I've heard that is going in underneath Rogers Parkway. And, and I don't know if they're doing that themselves or MoDOT's doing that for them. Um, but it has to, either it has to be constructed or it has to connect, um, north of Rogers Parkway, which will affect that existing playground. Um, so just like how MSD's current deep sewer affected the soccer field in Norm West Park. They gave you guys money to rebuild it. They're going to affect that playground on Rogers Parkway. And it's my understanding they're reimbursing you all for that value of that playground for you guys to do whatever you want with that money.
Is, is that the playground, the south one or the north one? Cause there's two, two playgrounds on Rogers Parkway.
Eric, I'm going to need your help on that. Bola, I think it's a south one, isn't it? Or Eric, yeah. Eric's popping in.
Eric can speak.
Yeah, it is the south by Rogers Parkway. It is very much like what happened in Brentwood Park. They're putting. Pipes going right through where the. Where the current, um, playground is now. So we've been working MSD's right away. And, uh, we're, uh, just, uh, we're working on the agreement and the grant is going to be forty thousand dollars replacement.
That, that's the first I'm hearing about this. Do you know the timing of when that playground would get knocked down?
Yeah, at this point I do not. We, we've just started working on the alignment or they just started working on the right away stuff. So that is, um. We're still early in the negotiations. We just got done with the, the negotiation part of it.
Okay. And then Craig on the, you mentioned the athletic fields, because I didn't see that on the unfunded. Are we assuming that what we're getting paid from MSD for destroying that soccer field? Will cover the cost of the new soccer field that we're putting in?
Correct. Yeah, the, um, in the soccer field's always been part of the funded projects. So, um, that's why it's always shown up in the renderings. So that's, that's staying unchanged. That's in the project.
Okay. Any other court, any other questions for Craig about that? Alderman plus?
Thank you. Um, Craig, so as I understand it, you said that the three seventy-five is a specific grant, meaning can it only be used for a particular purpose? And I'm assuming that something in the way of a sketch accompanied our request for the grant. And that the, what you showed us in the presentation is what was sent to them and, and insofar as them approving the grant. My question is this, as we go through this design process, how far can we deviate from that application? Uh, picture before we start running a foul of, um. Of, of, of the, of the, you know, the, the, the specificity with which the grant was given in the first place.
Yeah, good question. Um, and I'll have Eric kind of help me out on this too. So. You're absolutely right. The, you have to give them some sort of basis of, of a project. So all we have are these couple sketches I've showed you. Um, along with some of the program that I mentioned to you all about. So, um, that did accompany the grant. The grant allows some flexibility. So does it have to look like this, um, like the sketch showed where it's got, um, you know, brick and the big, you know, trusses? No, there's flexibility in the look of it. There's flexibility in what's actually in the building. But you couldn't take this six thousand square foot building and turn it into, uh, a two bathroom building. It's a thousand square feet. That they, that would, um, not, uh, go along with the grant because the grant is a cost share grant. So they're giving you three hundred and seventy thousand dollars towards a project to help pay for it. You can't take your project down to three hundred and seventy thousand dollars and say, all right, we're going to have you pay for everything. And we just made it a lot smaller project. So. To answer your question, there is flexibility, but the flexibility is limited. We, you can't just do a massive change and turn it into a, a two bathroom. CM or concrete mason unit building.
And, yeah, okay. So my second question is into Alderman O'Neill's point. Is there anything that would prohibit us from asking the design folks to come up with a number of options rather than present us with one option?
No, that's not a problem at all. I mean, there's limits, um, you know, because it, it costs time and money and I didn't have that in their contract. I'm sure I could, uh, ask them to just do some. A couple sketches. I'm sure they do that for you all, but if they do a couple sketches and you, then you tell them, do a couple more sketches, they'll ask for a change order. So. Um, there's limits to that, but I'm sure I could, you know, tell them that the board wants them to do a few sketches and they'll do that for you guys.
But my last question, and I hope everybody takes it in the spirit intended. Um, it was explained to me that one of the reasons why we had, we had to deal with this on the, on the consent agenda tonight, rather than going through committee first. Was the idea that there was a twelve to eighteen month, um, limit on the applicability of this money. And I see in the letter that begins congratulations. Um, it says in the third paragraph that there is a timeframe for completing projects then that was increased from twelve to eighteen months. Here's my question. The next sentence, the next part of that sentence says, to help reduce the need for extensions. If they're talking about the need for extensions in the letter, they certainly contemplated the winners of these grants asking for extensions. And I guess what I'm a little concerned about is the idea that no one ever explained to me that we could perhaps extend the twelve to eighteen months. Time limit and have no problems with putting this through proper channels and letting it be vetted by the committee first, rather than putting it on to, um, the. Uh, with little or no warning. And in addition to that, um, to again, Alderman O'Neill's point, um, to have it some, to some extent sprung on us. So. Taking that in the spirits intended, I guess my question is to Craig. Doesn't that sentence contemplate the fact that cities that get these grants can ask for extensions and, and get them?
It doesn't, um, I hope I don't say anything wrong here, but Eric actually sits on the board of this. So be- before we went for this grant.
Craig?
Yeah.
Could you let Eric answer that, please?
Go ahead. Yeah.
The, yeah, in the past, when it was twelve months, there, I think the, the issue was that people were asking for a sentence. Put the meeting grant in a position where they're having issues trying to, like, take. Well, this is the first year they've done the twelve to eighteen months. What they're trying to do is not. Not have these type of extensions. So, um. This year they've gone to the eighteen months. I'm not sure if they're going to grant any extensions. I think what they're trying to do is to alleviate this concern by extending it to the eighteen months.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, uh, Alderman Gould.
Yes, uh, can, can you clarify the, uh, playground? Are we talking about the playground, um, that MSD is going to need? Uh, by the apartments, uh, front of place apartments? Is that the playground you're talking about? And, and if so. Do they need that, um, area for all of the, the new infrastructure in order to manage the water? Uh, the, the storm flow better so that it doesn't add more to, um, Dorothy? Is that why? We now have an MSD issue there?
Eric, do you know, it's, it's my understanding that it's, it's, they need to remove the playground to actually construct this pipe. But, uh, I haven't been directly involved with that. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, I don't know if Lisa's here too. I think it's just a sanitary sewer pipe. The project, I think it's a project cleared pipe, to be fully honest.
Is, that's correct.
We can report back to Jeff if you want.
Yeah, how long ago did we know that that was necessary is, is a good question, because, you know, that park was always a point of discussion, especially earlier in this year. Um, as it related to, uh, egress and, and ingress of, of, uh. The apartments there and the desire of some of the residents to hold on to that, that park until, um. Uh, you know, Brentwood Bound is completed, because a lot of, a lot of kids actually, especially from the, the, the apartment complex there use that park. Um, so I'd like to know when we knew that we weren't going to have that park. Um, in the first place.
I haven't been directly involved. I don't know the timing, but I can tell you the original route, because I remember the original route, uh, was not going there. But I heard it hit, uh, Carst, which is like, um, Carst topography. That's like caves underground. And they had to come up with new alignments. So I would imagine this was a result of one of the new alignments.
Okay, it'd be, it'd be nice to know that, um, in case anybody, uh, asks. Um, the other clarification that I wanted to have is on the renderings of all of the Brentwood Bound. Areas, um, you've mentioned a couple of times that the current, um, I, I guess you call them comfort stations, bathrooms. It on, at Norm West aren't, um, are going to be in the master plan going to be removed, but all of the renders that I've seen on all the plans show that remaining. Um, so I guess kind of which is it? Is, is that one, the current facility staying? Um, or is it to be removed? Because everything I've seen visually shows that it's still there.
Yeah, good clarification. The, um, the current renderings that do not show any of the unfunded projects, which are the ones you were citing. They show it there because, um, if nothing gets funded, they'll remain there. Uh, once the event lawn building becomes funded, those will be the primary bathrooms for the park. Which it allows the other ones to be removed because of their, the current state in the event lawn bathrooms being right next to the soccer field, the parking lot. And having nicer facilities for the, the visitors.
Okay. And then my last question is that is based on timing. Um, what is the timing that we're looking at right now for? Um, the construction of the parking lot and the funded projects, right? The construction of the parking lot and the, the new soccer field. What's the timing look like on that? Are we? Twelve to eighteen months out from that? Or are we looking at twenty-four months?
Uh, twenty-four months for it all to be done.
For the, for the.
Yeah.
The, the field to be done.
Yeah. Construction will start this summer, um, and then it'll take eighteen months to complete it. So twenty-four months from like today roughly. We're looking at end of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah. And that was one of the benefits of having Chrisners. It's an independent team to really make sure that this can be designed quickly. And Wes, you got to bid faster than the rest of the project because of that timing and the time constraints put forward. Um, I will also add that, you know, um, this, this grant came up, we got awarded it, there's time constraints with it. Um, there are these other projects that I mentioned, the event lawn, I'm sorry, that the playground, the dog park and the, um. The playground, the dog park and the phase two trails, um, primarily probably the playground's the biggest one, because that's a two million dollar budget. And what's tricky is, is we originally tried to bring in design contracts for you all to approve. Um, which then allows time for, for people to work through the projects and come up with it. And then there's really no. Necessarily a definitive end. You could just do it whenever you want in. Um, and that didn't seem to work, you know, like, because you didn't want to spend the money on a project if you didn't have funding for it. So that's when that resolution came forward and said, hey, go after these grants. To then bring them to us all to then consider them. Um, unfortunately, the first grant we got, which it was last Monday. So this is like one week after we received it. Has an eighteen month timeframe and that's like really aggressive for a project like this. So, um. I apologize for the, the time constraints or, you know, I've heard some people say just dropping this on us. This is kind of part of the, the reaction of the resolution. So, um, what we can do going forward. On like the playground area, which is the biggest one we probably need to talk about, is consider in a future meeting. Approving a design contract for the playground. And therefore there isn't a time constraint. And then they can go through and design it for as much time as you guys would like and give them feedback and. Really make sure you're getting the project you want without that pressure. Um, so that could be something we, we do in the future. I'll let you guys consider. So you don't feel like these things are getting dropped on you.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you for that. I, I guess that I was going to hold on my question, but since you brought that up. Did we apply? Cause there's two Muni grants listed on, there's no page numbers on this, but the Brentwood Bound Grants Partnership Plan. Two Muni grants listed year one and year two, um, on there. Year one was. At least by this, according to this list, was supposed to be the playground. Year two was the event lawn building. Um, did we, and this is probably more of a question for Eric, did we apply for both grants already, um, and only? Okay, so we've, we've only done, though that was from a priority standpoint, was lower on the list or, or at least. According to this list and the residents, uh, feedback.
That was when, when, when Eric and I met about the, the Muni grants and, and what projects to apply for. When he told me the, um, the timeframe, we said we had to switch the projects because, like I mentioned, the, um, Norm West Park won't be done for. Two years from today. So because the playground is such a big part of the topography of that, it's up. You know, north of the, um, actual Norm West Park. So you, the GRG connector, Norm West Park constructor will actually have to build that area up. That's how you get those big water play kind of cascades is because the topography gets built up. Where we're using the phase one dirt to help build that up. So it's a sequential thing where we have to do a lot of the phase one work, which we can't even start in Norm West Park until Norm West Park closes, which is going to happen in the next two months. That phase one dirt comes over, then we have to do a lot of GRG improvements, actually kind of get the lake built before we could even start on that playground area. So after Eric and I really dug into it, it's like, okay, there's no way we could apply for that grant. For the playground because we couldn't get it built within eighteen months. Um, so then we said, well, we could do the event lawn building, because that actually could feasibly get built in eighteen months. So let's do that first and then next year we'll apply for the playground. So we just switched them. Because next year, when they say you have eighteen months to build it, we could then actually get that done in time, because the Norm West Park would actually be under construction.
In, in addition, Craig, MSD still owns part of the property that.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
Will, will be, will be on.
That was the other big thing, the, the big sewer project they're working on at the end of Brazu. Uh, MSD won't turn over those properties to the, the, to the city of Brentwood until twenty twenty-two. And we need those properties to do the, the active play area. That's the second component. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, with that folks, and again, I promise you, we are going to move twelve fifty-seven item I off the consent agenda and you'll have plenty of opportunity. To ask questions and, uh, ultimately to vote on that. Um, so with that, we're going to move on to item nine, the consent agenda. And as I said, there are twelve items currently on it. Uh, and we are going to move at the, uh, Alderman Weggie, you have something?
Yeah. If we're at the consent agenda, I would like to make sure to move twelve fifty-seven off of the consent agenda.
Sure. Yeah, we'll take that, we'll take that off. Um, which leaves a few, uh, the remaining eleven items. And I think we might have, I don't know, Alderman Pofka, you said you might have a question about one or two of them. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and I don't know if this is for Jason or if this is for Bola, but it has to do with, uh. Resolution J. And first of all, I want to say, I want to thank Bola for getting back to me so quickly today on the one question I had. It, it's a kind of a follow-up question that I was, I was thinking about this some more and as I was looking at it some more, I read with interest, um. The deliverables provided by, um, I'm assuming it's provided by Charlesworth. Uh, item B within the, uh, the body of the, of the. You know, of the resolution, not, not of the resolution itself, but of the materials that accompany the resolution. It says. Um. In addition to analyzing your current program, we can also make suggestions of areas of coverage to focus on to further. Reduce the risk of loss or transfer risk to insurance. And so Bola or Jason or whoever, um, I just want to confirm that what that means, at least in part, um, is that. We can ask questions about things like whether or not our law enforcement liability ought to be a standalone policy as opposed to a policy which. Is simply connected to our general liability policy for purposes of. connected to our general liability policy for purposes of making sure that we have adequate resources and things like that, reserves, if you will, and whether we're better protected by having a standalone policy in that area as opposed to a policy that's connected to something else. So it's sort of a question of clarification. Am I reading that deliverables paragraph correctly insofar as one of the things they're going to be analyzing is not just the extent of our coverage, but whether or not the framework of our coverage is best for us, or whether there might be alternatives that might be better?
Peter is online, and so is Jason. So Kelly, if you could recognize, okay, there's Peter Simonson.
Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. I'm Peter Simonson with Charlesworth Consulting. To answer your question, Alderman, yes, the scope of services includes looking at not only the individual coverage lines, but how those coverage lines fit together and provide coverage for the city.
Thank you very much. That's the only question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about any of the other remaining items on the consent agenda? Okay, with that, the chair would entertain a motion to pre-approve the consent agenda as amended by removing item I, resolution number 1257.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Ty, seconded by Alderman Gould. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderwoman Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neill? Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Parker Tyce?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Okay. By a vote of eight to zero, the board approves to approve the consent agenda as amended, taking item I off the list.
Thank you, Kelly. Next on the agenda is old business. We only have one item under that, and that is bill number 6304. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6304, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance establishing uniform date for expiration of terms of office for members of appointed committees, boards, and commissions.
Great, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6304 in the ordinance form.
Mr. Mayor, perfect. 6304 under ordinance form.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Alderman Plufka, and I had a second by Alderman Waggy. Any discussion on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neill?
Yes.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Parker Tyce?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 6304 passes by a vote of eight to zero, and it will become ordinance number 4943, when signed by the mayor.
Great, thank you, Kelly. And that brings us to new business. And as I mentioned, we only have one item under that, and that is resolution number 1257, a resolution approving a contract with Chrisner to design a new pavilion and event lawn in Norm West Park. Alderman Waggy, since you asked for this to be removed off the off the consent agenda, I'm going to give you the floor, if you'd like, to ask your question.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I have a lot of questions about this. And, you know, we talked about this a year ago. I think Alderwoman O'Neill's suggestion of a workshop at some point in the future to to revisit what has changed about boardwalks and where we are with phase two, and everything is is a very good idea. But I but I understand the urgency of this being considered now. I mean, I guess my first questions are like, can you remind me of what the intent of the event lawn and what the the vision of this building is for? I have some ideas in my head, but I don't want to rely on my memory. So Eric, I don't know if you can you can answer that?
I'd be happy to. In my mind, and what was kind of described is kind of an indoor-outdoor facility where you can kind of basically hold, can run the facility, we can have programs, events. And then with the event lawn, we could move musical, our summer concert series out there, events, kind of like a summer concert, not summer concert series, but like movie nights on the lawn, things like that. The idea of having a, the sidewalks around there would be a heavier sort of concrete, so you can have food trucks around there. You'd have kind of like the, a we talked about having the losing tools, thought of the farmer market out there if we wanted to do some sort of that type of kind of venue for that sort of thing. So it'd be kind of a multifaceted sort of space. Now, we that that's about as far as we got, because we never really even got into design. When you look at the actual initial scope, you talked about like a caterer's kitchen, a concession stand. I think that's probably overdesigned in my taste. I don't think we need a concession stand to work out of. I don't think we need a catering summer kitchen. We do need some something maybe to serve out of if you have something for an event, but we don't need something that large.
What about the, what's the idea behind the cafe? And I understand this is a notional drawing, but what was the thought process of a cafe?
And again, again, I don't, that's the kind of the concessions cafe. In my mind, that was an initial design. That was before we even discussed it with, that's before they even discussed with staff. I think concessions cafe is probably a little bit too much in my mind, but.
Okay, so just so I understand, so the event lawn is where we would have music on the menu, or Brentwood Beats, or those kinds of events, right? So we would pull that out of Brentwood Park, and we would we would be doing it here?
Right.
Okay, I'll let other people ask questions, and then I'll come back possibly.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Hey, I guess my question is for Craig. Craig, as far as the cost of using Chrisner, it's $146,000 plus, there's some other costs there, 4,000. You kind of mentioned that they would do a design to build on this, but they go beyond that here, don't they? Won't they be assisting in the bidding process? And then working kind of as our rep on this project all the way till ground, or till ribbon cutting? Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, I mean, there, it's a traditional design contract. So, yeah, they will design it all the way until it goes out to bid. They'll provide bidding services, and then they provide what's called construction administration. So that's when the architects answer any questions about their design and look at what are called submittals, their documents that verify what's going into the building is actually what was on the drawings. So and they'll do that all the way through construction, then we'll do the actual punchless walkthrough to determine substantial completion. So, yeah, it's a full design contract, but that means it does go beyond the actual design of the building. It does go into some construction oversight for architectural services.
And then, as I'm looking at section three of the scope of work of the architect, they come before what they call the owner, which I guess could be us, could be the board. They just during preliminary evaluations of the work, so to Alderwoman's O'Neill's point, I mean, that could be the point where we have input into the preliminary designs. And then from that, from that, they take the full schematic design, which they then bring back to us again. So we have, during this process, we have several input procedure or input times in this project.
That's absolutely right. I told them specifically that the board's going to want to be involved in the program and the look of this building, and that they needed to include scope and fee, because that takes time to make sure that they present to you all and get your feedback and support into that final design of the building. So you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Ty, did you have your
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I sort of have a problem with the way this is being done. I know that there's a real time crunch, and it's 18 months. But if if we have 78 weeks to do this project, we can't spend another two weeks to run this through a committee, have the Public Works Committee really delve into what this means, what the long-term ramifications for Brentwood will be, what's the long-term annual cost for this building, really discuss what we want in this building to help give direction. The place that you are looking at, that you designed in O'Fallon, looks more like a banquet hall, which I don't think is what we want here in Brentwood. I would just really, and even like just to hear tonight that the decision was made to go after a grant for this building rather than the playground, which makes sense. But tonight's the first time we've heard of that. So if if you had gone after this grant, and we knew this was coming, we could have been talking about it along the way at Public Works. So I just, I feel like Public Works needs to dig into some issues so that we're comfortable, so that I'm comfortable with voting on this.
So the, if I could just add, the the city brought resolution 1225 in July 20, and that was asking the board for approval to go after the Muni grant for specifically the construction cost of the pavilion, comfort station, and event lawn. So that was like the first time we brought it up to you all, was a couple of months ago, before we applied to this grant, just to make sure that you guys supported this endeavor. And it was unanimously supported. And then Eric went after the grant and was successful in achieving it. So I'm open to other suggestions on how to do this. We thought that we were abiding by the original resolution from last January that said, you know, to bring grants and funding opportunities to the board. You know, the resolution didn't say to bring into other committees, it said bring to the Board of Aldermen. So we're we're doing our best at trying to abide by the direction we thought we got from you all, but we're open to suggestions on on what else to do with these other projects, if if that's not the right approach.
And and I would just add in on the suggestion that this be taken up by Public Works, you know, if that if that's the case. And, you know, I really don't have anything to do with setting the agenda for Public Works, but if that's the decision, it's not just pushing it back two weeks, because then it would have to still come back to the Board of Aldermen for vote on that resolution, which means unless we held a special emergency meeting, which we could do, we certainly could do a Board of Aldermen, but if we don't, then we're looking at actually pushing everything off of one month on this, for the vote on this, which we didn't go from 18 months down to 17 months to get this project completed. But again, you know, I'm with Craig on this. I'm open to suggestions on how to to address this in the future. But unfortunately, this is this is where we are. And and maybe there was some miscommunication. I don't know, you know, as Craig said, the board authorized staff to go out and seek funding in June, in January this year. And then in June of this year, there was specifically this grant for specifically this project, this building. And so I see both sides, and I'm just trying to see what we can do, how we might be able to change this, as Craig said, in the future, so we don't have this. Again, Alderman Plufka, I think you had your hands up.
Yeah, just to, I mean, I can appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and I understand Craig's point of view as well. But I also, I also very much understand frustration expressed by a couple of different Aldermen tonight, other persons tonight. And I would join in that insofar as I don't think when we talked about this in July, we knew about the time constraint, or that we knew that the time constraint was going to force us into making a decision so quickly. I think, at least I'll tell you, when I voted for this earlier this summer, I did not have an idea in my head that there was somehow a time limit on when we could use this money. And I thought that we would have an opportunity to vet this process and to do some of the things that have been suggested by the other Alder persons tonight. And so my objection is largely timing. And so if Craig's looking for answers, I think part of the answer is that, at least this Alderman, who's not that familiar with the grant process, I didn't understand that 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 they will commonly put a time limit on your ability to use their grant money. And if he knows going into the application process that there is such a time limit, I'd like to know about that ahead of time, because in a case like ours, in the complicated construction phase that's going to follow this for the next two years, we've already discussed tonight a couple of timing issues about how things can be done and when they can be done, so that they can be done cost effectively. We need to know that going in. And I don't know that we did.
Alderman Waggy, I'm sorry, Alderman Waggy, I'm going to give Alderwoman O'Neill a chance. She has not yet.
I have two questions. First, can you clarify the composition of the event lawn? Are we simply talking about a sloping lawn of grass, or does this include an amphitheater with a stage or something with it, too? What is so costly about an event lawn?
So it is a grassed area. The majority of the cost is projects in the building. So the 2.15 million for the overall budget is not the grassed area. That is a component of the cost, but the majority of the cost is a 6,000 square foot building, bringing utilities there and the adjacent paving and sidewalks. The grass event lawn area, which is going to be turf side, will have irrigation. So there is some cost there, but that's a minor component of the overall budget.
So it's not a theater?
No, no, no.
And so my other concern that we haven't talked about is lighting. And that's one reason, if we could sit down and talk about this whole project, when we began, we looked at trails, and it was passive recreation, quiet, strollers, bikes, that sort of thing. And then, as we moved more and acquired more land, it became more like Brentwood Park, where it's active and lots of people and noise, and are vastly different. It's come to my attention that we have bird watchers in Brentwood, and they're active dawn and twilight. If we put major lighting in the part of this park that has a soccer field in a building like this, bird watchers are not going to be happy people. So what has been talked about in terms of lighting for this? Has it been discussed? Or is that part of this building?
It will be discussed once Chrisner is on board, assuming you approve him. I mean, they're they're the designers, so they're going to present to you what they believe is the right assessment for lighting, and then as part of the rest of the project, that'll be coordinated with Planning Design Studio, and they'll come up with a comprehensive lighting plan to review with you. So we don't, you know, Eric and I are not architects, you know, we know that there's a need for that, that needs to be discussed. But the first steps really to get an architect who will have an electrical engineer actually come up with some recommendations to bring to you all for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Gould?
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, I have, I've been having some Wi-Fi issues, so it's been hard to keep keep track of this. I guess the one question that I have, or the big concern that everybody has is time. And if, I'd like to know if we could go back to them and find out if they aren't going to allow extensions beyond the 18 months, because I have a hard time, even though we can build, construct the pavilion or the comfort station and the event lawn, another, you know, it's not even going to be accessible to the public for another, you know, 12 months, potentially six to six to 12 months. You know, because none of the parking lots will be done, none of the Norm West will be done. I'm sure Brazu and several of those other projects will still be going on in construction. So I think that we're ahead of our skis a little bit on the on the timing, and they're they're just, you know, it's a challenge. And if we can mitigate some of those problems, certainly, we need upgraded bathroom facilities down there. Some of the functionality of it, I think, then if we can get more timing off of it, it, I think, then if we can get more timing off of it, we probably could kick this to Public Works and have a little bit more discussion of functionality and features that we'd like to see in the building and then presumably, potentially bring the cost of the building down significantly if we don't have a full-on kitchen and a, and a cafe and all these amenities in it that are going to be very costly and costly to maintain. So my, I guess what I'm suggesting is a motion to go back and find out whether or not we can extend past the 18 months. And, and second to that motion is then take this to Public Works and have that, have the discussion there at that committee.
Can I give you another option?
Sure.
Another option is, is you could approve Krishna's contract, $146,000, that allows a design team to come on board and work with Public Works and the board and any other committee to come up with a scope of the project. And if you go past the time that they allow for the grant, you just lose the grant. I mean, we'll ask them for forgiveness, but at least you guys are asking questions, you want feedback, that you really need an architect on board.
Well.
By approving the contracts, we, we can get rid of the timeframe, but at least an architect will come in and you could say, hey, get rid of the cafe, do this, this and this, they'll come up with a sketch right for you and then you all can approve it. You know, I'm afraid that by, you know, pushing it off, like we still may not be able to answer your question, but by, if you just approve Krishna's contract and we remove the timeframe of the grant, so there's no longer that pressure that I'm hearing from you all, you at least have a professional on board that can come up with a program recommendations, go to all the different committees and you can say, no, I don't like it. And if the grant doesn't work, it doesn't work, you know?
I think I've got two concerns with that. One, that it's a, still $150,000 for, for the contract in order to do that. And if we decide that, you know what, we don't want to build such an extravagant building or whatever, we've, we've probably spent more money in, in design fees than we really need to. Second of that is I'm concerned about if we're, if we've now flip-flopped the, the priorities of going after the grant, how, how likely is it? Because when we looked at the previous chart, the, it was strong likelihood that we would get the grant for the, for the, the playground, which was the desired one and priority two for, for residents, and it was a 50/50 on this. What I'm wondering is, is that because it would be potentially the year after that we're asking for another grant from the same organization? And if they've given us, issued us one grant, how likely are they to issue us a second grant? And have we used up the grant that we really want for the playground on this? I guess is my big question.
I'll give that to Eric.
Yeah, the, the answer to the, the grant question is, is too full of is, is the 50/50 is, is a lot of the Muni grant and it comes down to points. So part of the, part of the point system is the grants per capita that the city receives. So obviously by receiving this grant, we lose points for the amount of grants really we have per capita. So the hope was we have not been, we have not applied for Muni grant for a number of years, trying to build up our points to go back-to-back for the next two years, specifically for Brentwood Bound. And my, my guess is I, I'm about, like I said, I'm still 50/50 whether or not we'll be able to get a grant next year. He said the, we said the playground first because that was the highest priority now for the residents. Professionally, we don't have bathrooms down in, in Norm West Park. It's hard to have a park of that size that hopefully will have the amount of people that we'll have down there without any restrooms. So when that thing gets built within a year, we're going to have people clamoring for bathrooms and we'll still need bathrooms down there at some point. So bathrooms still will be a priority at some point.
I totally agree with you, but it's not $2 million building for a bathroom. That's.
I'm sorry, Alderman Simms.
Is there a way to thread this needle, and I'll be careful with how many euphemisms I use, to like have our cake and eat it too? I mean, can we approve the contract and, and kick it over to Public Works to determine scope and scale? I mean, and if it is on a short timeframe, I mean, Ways and Means is working through, we've added several meetings this month in order to, to, to meet, you know, the, the time constraints of having a budget approved by, in December. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I understand the, the timing, but it needs to be weighed against a thoughtful process, but I don't see why we can't, you know, we wouldn't be able to, to buy some kind of solution where, where that can still happen. I, I want the money, but I also want the thoughtfulness. So, you know, where is there, is there a solution there in that regard?
Yeah, I think, Alderman Simms, I think that it actually was what Craig was suggesting is to go ahead, if you get approval of the contract tonight, that at least number one, takes the board out of, you don't need to come back to this body to get approval of the two weeks from now or four weeks from now, so it allows Krishna to start working on whatever they can. But at the same time, they can start working closely with Public Works Committee to try and refine this if, if needed. And, you know, the only risk to that is, is I think is Alderman Gould raised, is if there are any substantial changes, if there's substantial reduction in this building, then it's, it's possible that we paid with Krishna more than what was, was necessary. And I'm seeing him nodding with me, so I think I've adequately expressed his, his concern. But yeah, go right ahead.
Wouldn't it be nice if we had someone on our payroll that was on the board that might give us some guidance as to where their head, where the headspace was? I mean, can't we just keep, you know, and even if it's informally, if we kept this, the grand tour prized of where we are and so we don't fall into a, a rabbit hole, whereas we've, you know, designed ourselves out of qualifying? I mean, there's got to be a way to, you know, re, kind of keep them in the loop, right? I mean, I'm, I'm sure they'll lack reasonably.
Alderman Locke Miller.
I'm all for that option that Alderman Sims just highlighted and Craig's mentioned. I mean, once again, in this contract, we've got all kinds of openings in here to have our on-call architect meet with Public Works along the way and we can give them feedback. So I would rather get this, move this ball down the field and get this contract signed and get started. I guess my question is, Bola, I mean, when a municipality has granted a grant and then reneges on the grant, what does that look like moving forward for future grants?
It impacts your ability, am I, I'm still muted?
No, you're good.
Okay. It impacts the municipality's ability to get grants, you know, the next cycle, and I think that Eric talked a little bit about that. You know, there's been a deliberate process to hold off, and this was discussed with the board three, four years ago. You know, number of workshops that we would deliberately hold off so that we can apply for grants to help fully fund and complete this project. Also, you know, most of these grants have a time limit. If, some of you remember, for instance, all the STP grants, I think you all might be versed enough now to know that it's a three-year process. And we'd have received grants for Oak Tree Park. So for, for those of you that were on the board then, you might remember what the time process for is. So maybe it's just a refresher that when we bring these grant applications to the board, to not expect that you're reading the nitty-gritty, the fine details, but for us to go over all of that and spend a little bit more time explaining what the timeframes are so that we don't find ourselves in this kind of situation going forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Waggy. One clarification. So Krishna is a professional services, so is this an estimate or an actual cost of doing this design or will they be charging us an hourly rate?
Actual cost.
So they'll be charging us an hourly rate based on the four different tiers of, of labor costs that they gave us in August?
No, this is a lump sum contract for the event lawn building design contract.
Okay, so if we change requirements in the future and say we only want a bathroom and a drinking fountain, they would still charge us $140,000, which I believe is exactly what Jeff Gould was saying?
Yeah, I mean, if there, if there was a significant change to the program, we could go back to them and get a reduction to their contract. We would do a change order to the reduction. Like I started off in my presentation now, just to be clear, a massive change to this building will not meet the grant requirements. If you go from a 6,000 square foot building to a building with two bathrooms, you're going to lose the grant, you know, and so that's the bigger issue, that's $370,000.
So it seems to me there is no way that it is faster to have them start working and then have us think about the requirements and what we want in this building later because they would have to make changes and we run that risk of, of the, you know, delegitimizing the, the grant in the future. So it'd be nice to know what, what are the, the, you know, the boundaries of, of that grant and what we can do. I mean, I, I know there's a motion on the table, I, I believe that Public Works needs to work with the board with input and, and we can be expedient and come up with what the requirements are for this building in terms of features and, and capabilities and get that to Krishna. And if we were able to do that, the next, you know, Public Works is November 12th, we could have it back to the board on the 16th, that's two weeks. I, I can't see how that is slower than letting them run off and then, and then try and rein them back in.
Am I muted?
You're fine.
Okay. So to the motion that was, well, it wasn't a motion, but the comments that Alderman Locke Miller said and Alderman Sims and then Craig repeated as well, a motion to authorize this agreement tonight will allow Krishna to, and you know, we haven't posted the Public Works Committee agenda today. So if this motion is, if this contract is approved, then we engage them and they can come to the next meeting and as the committee starts to deliberate, they are there taking notes so that when they begin the design, they can bring that back to the board or the committee, however it is you want it, but we have to engage them tonight. So we have a professional architect, which we don't have on staff, that can provide assistance to the board. So it seems like a broken record, but I'm just repeating some of which I've heard already.
Yeah, the first step for an architect is called programming and that's where they come up with a spreadsheet and they go down, list out all the different priorities and the room sizes and what you guys want, and then from there, then they start the design. So that programming meeting would be the first step and that could be how that Public Works contracted.
Alderman Plufka.
I call the question.
Okay. Did we have a motion to approve 1257? I wasn't sure if we got one. Is that by Alderman Locke Mueller? No, I don't think we have a, okay.
Gould made a motion. Gould made a motion. Move it to Public Works for discussion and, and to find out the parameters of, and I'll, I'll modify that, find out the parameters of what was approved by the, the grant and then whether or not the timing is, is going to be an issue if, if we go past 18 months, do we lose the grant?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the city attorney to weigh in on this. I'm not sure if we, I, I, I'm not sure that's a proper motion, but I'll let Kevin tell me if it is. I think what, what we need to decide is whether or not to make a motion to approve 1257. And we don't need a motion to not approve 1257. So what, what I prefer to do at this point is, is the board, does anybody on the board care to make a motion to, to, to approve Resolution 1257? Alderman Plufka.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now we've got a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Locke Mueller to approve Resolution 1257. We have any discussion? Alderman Waggy.
So, so if this is approved, how do we know that if the scope goes down and it's still within the parameters of the grant, that we will be able to, to get Krishna to a lower number? How do we know we're not just writing a check for $140,000 no matter what we ask him to design?
I mean, it's like that with any, yeah, sure. It's like that with any consulting service. If, if we told them to do a larger building and it ends up that you guys end up just saying, I just want two bathrooms, even if it negates the grant, their, their contract's based on doing a 6,000 square foot building, event lawn and everything. So if that drastically changes, their contract amount will change as well. And I'll be the one going back to them saying, you got to reduce your fee, this is now a two bathroom building, a lot different than what we initially negotiated with you.
And why, why isn't this a professional services contract that, that is just straight time?
All the design services are lump sum that we've done with Brentwood Bound. That's traditional.
Okay.
Yeah, Jacobs, TWM, they're all lump sum contracts.
Alderman Locke Mueller, you had your hand?
No, I didn't.
Alderman.
You, did you call on me? You said Alderman and then mute.
I'm sorry, Alderman Simms.
I just, I just want to make sure, I understand, I'm following up on Alderman Waggy's question. So if hypothetically, we've got a contract for $150,000 and then we, it turns out the, the scope and scale of that is $75,000. These are arbitrary numbers. They'll take 75 and they won't hold us to the 150. Is that, is that where we would find ourselves, setting apart that we may lose the grant? I, I mean, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're not on the hook for a $150,000 contract if all we need is 75. I'm using those numbers just for emphasis.
Yeah. If you guys drastically change the scope of the contract, I'll be the one that goes back and says, all right, they're not paying you this much because this is a, you know, very simple building.
So in that regard, it sounds like we could approve this and then we're, have, you know, have Public Works take on the, you know, laboring war of refining what this is actually going to look like with the architect who's been retained, is that right?
I'll answer for Craig, yes.
Yes, okay.
I gave you the head nod, sorry.
A lot of head nods in here.
Okay, we have any further discussion? Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve Resolution 1257. A yes vote is obviously to approve and a no vote is to not approve. With that, can we get a roll call, please? Kelly.
Alderman Ebling.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Locke Miller.
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal.
Yes.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Parker Tyce.
No.
Alderman, Alderman Waggy.
No.
Okay. By a vote of six to zero, the motion passes.
Six to. All right, six to.
I mean, six to, when I said zero, sorry.
To oppose, yeah. Okay, Resolution 1257 passes by account of six to two. Okay, we're going to move on. We have citizen comment. Again, now the opportunity for anybody in the public who cares to address the board to do so, you will be given up to three minutes and just, I guess on your computer or your iPad, just raise your hand, there's a feature on that, I think, to do that.
We don't have anybody who has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. We do have a, a need for a closed session tonight, so with that, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal RSMO 1610.021 subsection 1 and real estate, RSMO section 610.021 subsection 2, and adjourn from the executive session and regular session from that meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Ebling. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Ebling.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Locke Miller.
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal.
Yes.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Parker Tyce.
Yes.
Alderman Waggy.
Yes.
A vote of eight to zero, we'll move to go to closed session.
Okay, let me just ask real quick, does anybody need to take a break? If not, if you do, just raise your hand. If not, we'll just log off and then log right back in for the closed session. Okay, thanks.